Hello everyone, my name is Matt Hollen. I am the Chair of the Macon County Young Progressive Voters here in Macon County. This is our event. And, uh, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I also want to thank the teachers and the candidates for being part of this. And Mo Green for coming out here. And I'm gonna send the mic over to him. He's gonna introduce himself.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, let's try that one more time. Good evening.
Good evening.
Excellent. Good to see everyone this evening. Thank you for allowing me to be in your midst this evening. Uh, so, my name is Maurice Green. I do go by Mo. And, uh, I am running for State Superintendent of Public Construction. We're forward to the conversation. So, uh, do we get started?
Yep. That's all you're gonna say about yourself? Okay, you got it. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk more when it's my time to talk.
Okay.
Um, so the purpose of our group, Macon County Young Progressive Voters, is to, um, not only do things for our community, um, such as we have a food and water drive, uh, going on, and, I don't know if you've seen, but back in the back of the table, we have, um, some, you can give donations to, uh, Together We Can here in Macon County. And, they deal with foster families, um, so, if you're willing to give tonight, that'd be great. Uh, but, but we do things like that. Uh, but our main purpose is to, um, bring enthusiasm to young voters, uh, to be a part of the democratic process. So, um, that's what we're all about. We're trying to just do more outreach, um, as much as we can, so, um... The rules? Oh, sorry. This is Betsy Base. She is our, um, senior, what did we say her word?
Senior's good enough.
So, tonight's event, because we want to make it less stressful, we could all use a little stress release right now. And, so, there's an old game show called, "Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?", if anybody has ever seen it before. It's old. It was Jeff Foxworthy and John Senna, I believe, was who were the hosts for it. And, they were contestants, adults were asked questions that were fifth grade curriculum. And, so, that's what we thought, let's make it fun. So, I pulled the questions from that show, so these are no more difficult than what we expect fifth graders to know. So, um, each of the contestants received the questions and the answers a week ago. So, they did have a chance to familiarize themselves with where we're going with this and what kind of questions would be asked. Now, we get to see how well they studied. They do not get to have any materials like, um, phones for checking in on anything, they don't get to phone a friend, um, they don't get to use tablets. Um, but what they do get is random questions. And, so, up front here, we have the variety of the topics: social studies, history, geography, language, language arts, science, and math. I would not do well on the math ones. Then, we also have candidate questions. We have blue candidate questions, which are just basic board-to-bed every day, what should you know, what do you think about that? Then, we have the red questions. These are the more difficult ones. These are the challenging questions. And then, the green ones are, "Go", moving forward towards the future. What do you think the future looks like for the Macon County Board of Education? So, we divided them up, so nobody gets all the hard questions, nobody gets all the future-forward-looking questions, and we will randomly have you select, so we're not even gonna pick them for you. You're gonna put your hand in there, and then, Mo Green is going to read the question. Everyone gets one minute to answer the questions. Alright?
I'm Marcia Doty, for someone that obviously knows.
Can't hear you right here, you're standing there.
I'm Marcia Doty, I was a substitute teacher in Macon County for about 15 years. And, uh, I moved in here, here in '08, which was not a good time to get a full-time job. So, that's what I ended up doing, along with a lot of other things here. And, I retired from that this year.
Hi, I'm Sue Felkamp. Um, I was a college teacher and coach for a long time, and then I moved up here in '98, left and came back in '04. And, um, I've worked, um, at sports clubs, and I did a little bit of, uh, substituting or assisting help a little bit, and helping a little bit. And, um, I'm just a senior citizen, it's been a long time since I was in the fifth grade. But, we're gonna give it a try.
Alright, now, we're gonna do a coin toss to see who gets to introduce themselves first. Each of our candidates gets three minutes to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about why they think that they're the one for the job. Matt is the expert at coin tossing. So, we will let Mr. Breglove call it in the air.
I'm sure the expert did.
Bobby, can we have another caller?
Let's go.
You got it. Alright. Heads again?
Heads.
Alright.
Everyone can hear me, correct? Raise your hand, good. First, I want to say, give, uh, voice my appreciation for the Progressive Voters, for Betsy putting this together.
I'm gonna hold it up closer to you.
Closer to you. Yeah. Hope everybody heard that, I appreciate what they've done. I think I'll begin by giving a little background about myself. Um, I don't know, lifelong resident of Macon County. Went to school here, attended East Franklin High, uh, East Franklin Elementary while I was there. Then, went to Franklin High School, graduated. And Franklin, the only time I've been involved in this county was the time I was in college. Was fortunate enough to go to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, where I received my degree in Business Administration. Uh, upon my return, I furthered my education by going to Western Carolina and receiving my Masters of Business Administration. I go in at night, by that time, I talked about 10:32, I had a family, so it's just a matter of finding the time to do what needed to be done. Anyone that knows me knows, above all else, it's family in my life. This is what I'm like. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Microphone here, we're speaking.
Alright, I'm holding it to the ear, so I thought I'd do that again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Nice, good. As I was saying, um, it's all about family, for me, shall we say. Actually, when I returned home from college, uh, was probably the smartest thing I did, had some offers to go elsewhere, but I was bound and determined to come back to Macon County. And, of course, the big, one of the big reasons was the woman I loved was here, my wife Catherine. She and I have been married for 43 years, and we plan to be together from now until someone causes us to a better place, if we put it. I have two children, both of whom are products of Macon County Schools. My son Jared, and my daughter Annie, who, actually, Annie, I call her Annie, she's here in August, raise your hand, Annie, some people just seen. She's actually, she herself works in the Macon, uh, educational system, she's our Director of Student Services. And, the one that keeps bringing me back is my two, I actually have three grandchildren here in the system, one's 17, and the two that are here are both 11 and eight. And, I promise you, if anyone has any questions about, am I vested in Macon County Schools' answer is most certainly yes. Nothing is more important to me than their, than their education, and I'm striving to do to make sure that they receive the absolute best that they possibly can. Another thing you may know about me is, I have kind of a personal creed, and I believe in the words, it's called "service to others". Fundly believe that, when you're living in the community, and a part of that community, is your, you need to be vested in that community, and work to make it a better place for everyone that lives there. Um, when I came back, and I've been involved in civic duties ever since I returned, I told that boy, you too badly, for example, years ago, I served in an organization known as the J.C.'s, those young men's organizations who worked to make the county better. We were the fore-runners of the Santa Pough, for example. We involved in the clock palling, we helped to build the teleport pad for Angel Hospital. Three minutes and 10 seconds. Well, I guess I'm, I give it a chance. But anyways, thank you for listening, and hopefully come back up for the second time around.
No, because you're gonna wanna come another one. You're gonna have an opportunity again. You'll have an opportunity to listen again.
So, again, I'd like to echo Jim's comments, uh, and thanking Betsy and the Macon Young Progressives for putting this event together. I also want to thank Pastor Ben Wendell of Discover Church, uh, a week ago today. Pastor Wendell and his congregation were here for, I don't know, three or fourth year in a row, doing campus beautification, and they do a fantastic job every year. Forty-nine years ago, I'm also a product of Macon County Schools, 49 years ago, I was at a play on this stage, directed by the late Earl Drymon, whose name you see on the highways in this area. I'm a Macon County native as well, I'm an eighth grade graduate of the, of the middle school that used to stand where the cafeteria is, I'm a graduate of Highland School. And tomorrow morning, I will start my 30th year teaching here at Franklin High School. Thank you. Um, when I see, and if you've got sensitivity to flashing red lights, close your eyes or avert them. But, when I see Macon County Schools right now, I see a series of flashing red lights. For every kindergarten student who comes to school tomorrow, they only have one kindergarten year. For every student who starts at Nanahewa, Highlands, East Franklin, Hartiguechee, and so on. And, my candidacy is about having a sense of urgency. I'm not gonna tell you that Tim Breglove has done a bad job, because he's not. I just have a, a, a sense of urgency that I, that I wanna bring to our school system. I look at that child entering kindergarten tomorrow, that's a child that's gonna enter MBI, Macon Middle, and Franklin High, and I'm looking at the situations that we face in our classrooms, and I'm thinking, we can't, we can't wait. Um, we have mental health issues that can't wait. We have teacher recruitment and retention issues that can't wait. We've got a host of capital outlay needs that I, um, that we, that cannot wait. And I wanna promise you, as a school board member, if you were to trust me with your vote, that I'll ask the hard questions, I promoted critical thinking in the classroom, I'll promote critical thinking on the board, I'll make sure every dollar that we spend can show up in the classroom. Um, I'd ask that everybody who's here tonight, and if you're following Mr. Coggins' livestream, to go to my website, johndeville.com, and click on the History of Advocacy page, and look at all the things that I have done as a classroom teacher, not elected official, but as a classroom teacher, look at what I have done since I've been in the classroom for Macon County Schools, for the parents, for the teachers, for Macon County, and for students and teachers across the state. Um, in so many ways, I think Raleigh has abandoned us, um, and I think in some ways we could take advantage of that. Is that three minutes? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna start with the questions. Um, we're gonna start with Sue, and we'll start with Matt.
Okay, first question. It's a long one. It's a long question. Number 113. A farmer notices that every day for the past 10 days, the number of pigeons in his field has doubled. There are 1,024 pigeons in the field today. There were two pigeons there the first day. How many pigeons were there yesterday?
1,024 today, so yesterday would be 512.
You're correct!
Okay, now it's the candidates. We'll start with Jim.
Yep. Good, alright. So, on a class field trip, there are four buses taking 36 students to the zoo. Each bus carries the same number of students. How many students are on each bus?
Can you still hear me? Nine.
You are correct! Okay. If each person has a typical number of eyes, how many people are in the room? You are correct!
Are we discriminated against pirates?
I think so.
Are you smarter than a fifth grader? If a car is traveling at 40 miles per hour, how long will it take to go 190 miles?
Four goes into 19, four, about four and a half hours? Uh-oh.
I don't know if I can give you that. I mean, you, I mean, it's close, but it's four hours and 45 minutes! The judge was saying you can't get that.
This is a candidate question.
This is out of which, which bucket?
This is blue.
This is the blue bucket.
Basic information.
How would you deal with curriculum challenges?
One of the things you learn when you become a board member, is that you put the best people you possibly can in positions that you, that are available. And, for example, currently, our Director of Curriculum is Mr., is Mickey Noe. Mickey was the principal here for two years before he moved to Central Office, was a, a experienced educator. So, what you do is you sit back and you listen, and you turn those, the experts loose, and let Tim tell you, and then you agree or you disagree, but bluntly, in the times that Mr. Noe has been a curriculum director, there's been no disagreement. He's working on a lot of things to benefit our students, such as a mentor program for young teachers. He's working with our ESL students, so they understand better. He has worked on programs to incorporate youngsters into, uh, activities outside of school. So, curriculum comes from the state, but you can tweak it to make it better for all the students that are Macon, that, that we are entrusted to be careful in Macon County. Now, John?
Okay, John. So, if you're gonna redeem yourself, John. What, what role does the Board of Education have in creating school policies?
I think the Board of Education has, always has, the final say in, in school policy. I think that process should be collaborative, so you're collaborating with teachers, parents, students, building administrators, uh, the leadership team at the Central Office, but the butt stops with the Board of Education in developing policy. That's their number one role, is, is to formulate policy, and to see that the leadership team then executes that policy.
Alright, now we'll move on to something simple like science.
What is the tallest mammal on Earth? Tallest mammal.
I believe that's a giraffe.
You are correct!
The answer's four hours and 45 minutes.
What are the three states of matter?
Uh, solid, gas, and liquid.
You are correct!
Good job.
What force pulls objects towards Earth or, and keeps humans from floating in the sky?
That would be gravity.
Okay, here we go. This is Jim. Okay, Jim. You ready?
Ready.
Science question, when's the last time you studied science?
Uh, I refuse to answer that question.
What is the process of water turning into vapor called?
I believe it's called evaporation.
That's correct! Alright. I'll stay right here.
You stay right there.
Right. Start this microphone off.
He's gotta get closer to his mouth.
How will you prevent?
How will you prevent? How will you prevent conflicts of interest from influencing your decisions on the board? I think the easiest way, I've got four other board members, and so, if you're sharing the decision-making process, as long as you're not playing the game of Lone Ranger, and you're trying to ramrod your own individual agenda through, and you make sure that all other board members have had their say, and that teachers, building administrators, uh, all the leadership team at the Central Office have all had their say, and everything is above board, I, I think that that solves that problem.
How will you handle requests if approached by teachers?
It's kinda funny, I thought we were actually gonna be picking out questions we would answer from this, so I had to definitely pick out, I'm talking about three different groups of people. Three different groups. Basically, there's a process, and what board members have to be very, very careful, is when you're approached by someone, the first thing I've heard when I was, went to my first training is, you never say, "I'll take care of it", because you're opening up a trap for yourself that you may not be able to get out of bluntly. There's a process. If a teacher has an issue, and they call me, my first question is gonna be, "Have you talked to your principal? And if not, why not?". I think that's the first thing you should, you should do. If she, if he or she indicates that's not appropriate, or don't feel comfortable, then the next thing you do is you talk to the superintendent, and make him aware of your issues. But, the board member should never, ever, in my opinion, get involved in matters of personnel, or matters of opinion, or things that go in. As I said, there's a po, there's a process to take place, that's why we put the people in place.
What's the subject there?
Language arts.
We know it's English.
Charles Dodgson wrote the book, Alice Through the Looking Glass. What is his pen name?
He is, um, Lewis Carroll.
Correct! How many compound words are in the following sentence? Someone from the classroom was playing baseball in the cafeteria.
Well, Mr. Green, I believe I can agree.
You are correct! And I'm just Mo, not Mr. Green. Alright. Any pressure, feeling any pressure?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, lots of pressure. Good.
We're up by one.
We're, okay, and you wanna keep it that way?
Maybe.
Alright. How many adjectives are in this sentence? Billy made a rude noise in class.
That would be one.
You are correct!
Yes.
Okay, John, here we go. Who wrote the Harry Potter book series?
J.K. Rowling.
You are correct! Now, is that her pen name?
Time for another candidate question.
She actually has a pen name. Does anyone know her pen name?
Do you?
I might.
Time for a candidate question, from John Deville. This is the easy future.
How should the Board of Education determine its priorities?
I think it does that through a number of ways. I think it's through deep conversations with the community, uh, Superintendent Lynch just, uh, through a grant, commissioned Open Way Learning out of Asheville to do some deep learning sessions, and so, some priorities for the district were established that way. That's one way to do it. One way is just to wander the hallways and, and talk to teachers and students. Another way is to get out to different community groups and, and talk to them. Um, and then, you have to compare that with what the wallet is going to enable, so you have to look at what your financial situation is, and match up that financial situation with what the priorities are.
What is your vision for education in this county?
When I first came on the board at that time, there was a dumb saying that had been taught, and the emphasis at that point was called, "Every student should be made college-ready". Folks are looking and say, "I'm not sure who came up with that", but they, they were totally out of the left, right, field, wherever you wanna put it. That's just not what it's about. What's about is crafting an educational program that's gonna give every single student that comes through our doors, a chance to better themselves and make themselves a success in future. That can be through college, great. It can be through, oh, yeah.
That can be through college, great, it can be through vocational. And in Macon County, we have new emphasis on CTE programs, Career Technical, trying to develop that, because that is where the future is. It's my firm belief. And the other part of this, as you say, you listen to the teachers, you get their input, they should be able to tell us what they feel like would be the best interest of our board and moving forward. But always, still and again, as long as I keep in mind, the best interest students can't go wrong. Now, we're gonna do geography.
Sue? The tropic of Capricorn lies in which hemisphere?
That would be the southern hemisphere.
That would be correct! Okay, here we go. Main borders which United States state?
New Hampshire.
You are correct! Hey Jim, you ready?
Let's see.
What country has the longest border with the United States?
I believe that would be Canada.
You are correct! What landmass on Earth is known as the island continent? Australia. You are correct!
Alright, time for another candidate question. I believe we started with blue. Who ended? I think you did end last time. Let's start with you.
Oh boy, this is a good question. What kind of relationship should the Board of Education have with the county commissioners? Okay, here we go. Let's see.
Well, that's okay, a better one than we've had. I think, I think if you go back and read the archives, which I have, you're gonna find board members, the Macon County Board of Education, and you're gonna find county commissioners routinely suggest, almost every single budget session, "We need to meet more often." That sentiment was expressed right here below us on May 28th. Josh Young, county commissioner, "We need to meet at least once a quarter." Absolutely. We need to meet at least once a quarter. And I'd also add to that, every single dollar that Macon County schools spends should be published on the web. So there is total transparency between the Board of Education, the county commissioners, between the Board of Education and the taxpayers, and I think through that transparency, greater trust in what currently exists can be fostered.
I should've asked this of my board when I was superintendent of Guilford County Schools. What is the role of the superintendent of schools?
Well, first, let me point out, our superintendent here tonight is Mr. Josh Lance. He's our new superintendent. Local boy, very brand, and totally invested in our school system. The superintendent is basically the leader. He's the general. He's the pilot of the craft. He's whatever you wanna call him. He is vested in running our system. The Board of Education works with him. We interact with him. He reports to us. We try to give him the advantages that he can use. The bottom line, the superintendent controls our school system. And it's very, very important that we have a good one. When I first came on the board, I'm not, hope this doesn't come across long away, we did not have a good superintendent. And it was not a good scenario. Since that point, we've been very lucky. We've had good superintendents. And I feel that we have the absolute best choice we possibly could in Josh. He's hit the ground running. He knows how the system works. He has his leadership team in place, and I expect great things from our school system. Social studies.
The great sweets in Egypt has the head of a man and a body of what, which species of animal?
A lion.
Correct! Whose pitcher is on the two-dollar bill?
You know, I found one of those in my drawer. I guess I was saving it for something. But, um, I heard it was a Thomas Jefferson.
Excellent, very good. You are correct!
We're gonna switch it up and give them more candidate questions?
What are the current challenges facing Macon County schools?
I think the biggest issue that faces every single school system in our state is funding. For those that don't know, we have a system which is where the state determines the amount of teachers we're gonna have, how they're gonna pay. All the other positions need about a thing called the ADM, the Average Day membership, which is determined 10 days in the school year. And they take that figure, and then they come up with an amount based on that number to fund the positions. Well, it's wholly inadequate bluntly. It just doesn't. Especially in a county where we have two K-12 schools. You simply can't equate that in terms of trying to determine the teachers and the qualified staff that you need. The second part, of course, is our changing world. It's our job as board members to try to look out, as I've mentioned. They face, our children face, an uncertain future, to say the least. And so, it is our job to try to prepare them as before to be a success in their coming years after they leave high school and come back hopefully to Macon County.
What do you see as the role of the Board of Education?
Again, I think the primary role of the board is to develop policy. And again, to develop policy through collaboration with teachers, parents, students, leadership team at the central office, and balance all of that against the financial constraints. So you've got your money on one hand, and you have your priorities on the other, and you try to, what's the most important thing? Do we have the money for it? And then, it goes down to you, you don't have any money anymore. But I think it's formulating policy and principles, and then you let your superintendent go with that, and your building administrators and your teachers go with that tether.
Alright, right now, we have candidates at...
Seven.
And the teachers?
Nine.
So, the teachers are winning. Who did that now? We are going to take a brief intermission, let everybody cool off a little bit. You have no idea how hot it is up here on these lights. But before we do that, we wanted to give Mo Green an opportunity to talk about education from the state perspective.
Excellent. So, again, good evening to everybody. Oh Lord, we've lost the crowd. Good evening! Again, thank you so much for allowing me just a moment of your time this evening. So what I've been saying all over the state is that the very soul of public education is on the ballot this November. And that it is going to take champions of public education to meet this moment. Now, before the primary, I was saying something slightly different. Before the primary, I was talking about public education being dismantled brick by precious brick. And I would lift up any number of things, including funding of our public schools, where we find ourselves in 48 compared to the rest of the nation. Forty-nine with regards to the effort that our state puts into public funding compared to the rest of the nation. At the same time, we're seeing the vast expansion of the private school voucher program that is literally gonna take billions of dollars and have them go to private schools. And will allow the wealthiest of the wealthiest, if you will, to take advantage of this. Even if they already have their child in a private school, and I can obviously afford it. You know, I would go on and on like that. And as I shared with many folks, I started depressing myself with those comments. And so I then sort of shifted gears and said, "Well, let me talk about a vision, a way forward, if you will." And so the vision that I put forward is the following. It's a vision that we utilized when I was superintendent of Guilford County Schools for seven and a half years. That vision is, to use a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And to combine that with a focus on excellence, being the best, because that's what our children absolutely deserve. And so, that's what we would do for the entire state. Is say, "Now, we're going to be the best school system in the entire country", if you will. So when I would talk about the being the best in Guilford County Schools, folks would look at me and go, "Blessed is Lil' Har. He has no idea. We had the most low-performance schools under the old accountability metrics" when I arrived as superintendent. But I would continue to talk about being the best and being excellent, and then try to put in systems and strategies to get us to a place where we were recognized as a great school system. And so the same thing then would be true for us, for the entire state of North Carolina. And so there are things that we need to be focused on. Obviously, we need more funding of our public schools. There's no question about that. We absolutely, though, need to revere our educators and pay them substantially more. And when I say educators, I'm certainly talking about our teachers, absolutely. But I'm actually talking about all those who have a part to play in the education of our students. And so I'm talking about the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, the custodians. They all are critically important. And then the word revered, it is the best word I could come up with. This is higher than respect. I want folks to understand that this is a noble profession. And so this isn't new for the campaign. This is what we started to utilize when I was superintendent of Guilford County Schools. I want our educators to feel like they are revered. And so, that's part of the strategy. We absolutely have to engage our parents and community in this work. We absolutely have to provide safe and secure learning environments for each and every one of our students. We absolutely have to provide differentiated instruction so that each child can choose what they want to do when they graduate from high school. It may be college, and that would be wonderful. It may be career, and that would be wonderful as well. But they need to be in a position to be able to make that choice. And then finally, we must celebrate the good in public education. And so, when I would say this in Guilford County Schools, folks would look at me and go, "Well, haven't you read the headlines? Don't you know all of the challenges that exist in our public schools?" And absolutely, I do. But that does not mean that we don't have wonderful things going on in our public schools each and every day. And it's important for those who are champions of public education to be sure that you are lifting those things up. And so I'll just give you a couple of headlines about Guilford County Schools, where we celebrate it every day. We revered our educators. We had our parents and community embrace the work. Our students revealed how exceptional they were. Those low-performance schools under the old accountability metrics were no longer low-performing. The graduation rate went from the high 70s to almost 90%. It's now over 90% in Guilford County Schools. While at the same time, increased the number of kids who are taking and passing college-level courses while still in high school. Our advanced placement exams, and international baccalaureate exams where they would get college credit for. Increased the number of kids who are taking and passing career and technical education courses. To the point where the district was recognized in remarkable ways. The district was also recognized as a national district of character. One of three when I was superintendent that year that was recognized. Fast forward, this past year, U.S. News and World Report identifies the number-one elementary school in the state, the number-one middle school in the state, the number-one high school in the state, the number-one high school in the entire country. Four things that U.S. News and World Report recognizes. The number-one, yeah, so the number-one elementary school, Guilford County School School. The number-one middle school in the state, Guilford County School School. The number-two high school in the state, Guilford County School School. The number-one high school in the state, Guilford County School School. The number-one high school in the entire country, Guilford County School. We have the capacity to do the work. Our educators can do the work. We, as a community, can embrace what's going on. Our children will reveal how exceptional they were. So that's what I was saying before the primary. Got home on the night of the primary, I've never run for office before, mind you, and so I'm watching the returns on my TV, and I was blown away. Over 400,000 individuals said they want Mo Green to be their next superintendent. At the same time that that occurred, I said, "Well, let me see who I am running against." Whoa. If you don't know, let me just give you some hope as to why then I changed the language to be clear that the very soul of public education is on the ballot, and it will take champions of public education to meet this moment. My opponent has already called for the abolishment of the State Board of Public Education, Mr. Green. This is a body that is established in the North Carolina Constitution. The other thing that's in our North Carolina Constitution is free public schools. We need to be clear about where we're headed. And so I encourage folks to think not about whether you are Democrat or Republican, whether you're Libertarian or Unaffiliated, or any other party, but rather to say, "I am a champion of public education, and if so, I would encourage you to talk about three things when you have the conversations that I encourage us to have with folks in our communities." One is experience. I've been blessed to have been the superintendent of Guilford County Schools, the deputy superintendent, and the general counsel for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools have been in any number of organizations connected with schools. My opponent, she homeschools her students. Nothing against homeschool, but you're talking about the chief administrator officer for public schools for the state of North Carolina. 2,500-plus schools, 1.4 million students, administers a budget of $11 billion annually. You might wanna have somebody that has had some experience. Second thing then is belief in our public schools. Certainly, I hope you get the sense that I believe in them. My wife and I, we were blessed to have two children. We put both of them into our public schools. My opponent has called our public schools all sorts of things, everything from cesspools of evil lies and deception, indoctrination centers encouraging parents not to send our children to our public schools. And so, I think if you want to lead our schools and advocate for them, you ought to believe in them. And then, finally, character, character. I'm not talking about myself in this instance, but rather what we tried to do with Guilford County Schools, and what we will take to the state with regards to character development, as opposed to my opponent, who took her own children to the attempted insurrection on January 6, 2021, came back to her hotel that night and said President Trump is going to be in office for two more weeks, needs to set aside the U.S. Constitution, invoked the insurrection act, bring in the military, and have them arrest anyone who has helped certify the election. This is a person who's called for the executions of men, including Barack Obama, wants to have him executed on pay-for-view, if you will. I question whether this is the kind of character we want next to our children. And so, I ask the following of you as I conclude my comments. Number one, I certainly would request that you vote for Mo Green. Number two, I certainly would ask that you support my campaign. You can go to my website, which is mo green for NC dot com. Number three, I certainly ask that you spread the word about the nature of this campaign to all of your friends and community members. And then, finally, I ask folks to do this all over the state. Ask people to declare that they are a champion of public education. Are you willing to do that this evening?
Yeah.
Let's do that this evening. So, what I'm going to say is, I am a champion of public education, and you'll repeat after me. You ready? We ready? Okay, let's try it. I am a champion of public education. So, that was good. That was good. But what are we trying to be? Excellent. Excellent. The mind shift starts now. And so, I'd love for us to do it one more time, but this time with a little more vigor. You ready to try?
Yeah.
Okay, let's try it one more time. Let's say, I am a champion of public education.
Champion.
Thank you, and be blessed.
All right, I think we're going to get started again. We'd like to give a shout-out to the Macon County Unprogressive Voter Crew back there that's helping out with the snacks and things and everything. Good shout-out to Mo for coming out. So, now, I think we're going to give the candidates some more remarks. We're going to let John speak.
Thank you very much. So, I'll just pick up where I left off. And I want to speak just, we've got three minutes right now? Okay. So, I want to speak just a second about vouchers, which Jim mentioned the fact that we don't have proper funding, and a lot of that traces back to the situation with vouchers. I came to the school board in 2013. I was the first person in the state to approach the school board to confront the issue of vouchers in 2013. And the board passed, under Jim's leadership, the board passed a resolution calling into question vouchers. In 2013, it was a $10 million camel's nose in the tent. For fiscal year '24-'25, it's about a quarter of a billion nose in the tent. And then, the proposal for next year is a half a billion. And those dollars are almost entirely unaccountable. So, if you want to know where our money is, it's in unaccountable vouchers. I want to recap the week I've had this past week. Last Monday, I had lunch, a two-hour lunch with Rick Litzberg. Rick is the commander of American Legion Post 108. We had a two-hour lunch. We disagreed about, I'd say, 90% of the things that we talked about. But we agreed on three things: the love of democracy, love of critical thinking, and love of Macon County children. And he invited me to the American Legion Post 108 Friday night, and I came. And according to that crowd, I was the first educator ever to go into that room. Yesterday, I was in the street, Phillips Street Fair with my tent. I'll be there at least three more times. This morning, I was giving a talk in a local church on the seven social sins, and trying to avoid those seven social sins in my dream for Macon County education. And tonight, I'm here. I underline all those things to make two points. One is reaching across every possible political divide and pulling the community together, and the energy and sense of urgency. In my mind, a category four has hit public education, and it's all hands on deck. And we create, one of the roles of the board is to create a punch list and hand that punch list out to every community member who professes a love and support of public education. And as a board member, I would work that punch list. How much time do I have? 30 seconds. Again, I would refer you back to the website, johndavill.com, and take a look at the things that I've done. Start, first person in the state to go to a county commission and demand a bipartisan resolution on Medicaid funding. 20 years ago this month, getting the school board to pay teachers on time. The school board and the central office was reluctant. They were going to have brand-new teachers, waiting for six weeks before they were paid. I came with a group, with a group of teachers, and we put pressure on the board, and we got that. If you go to the History of Africa's page on johndavill.com, you're going to find about 15 things like that.
I'll just take you. Fastest three minutes ever been through, to be honest with you. I think John would agree with that, so I'll cut to the chase. One of the things, phrases I'm using in connection with what I feel about Green, is that experience counts, folks. I was first elected to the Board of Education in 2008. If I'd known what I was getting into at that time, I'm absolutely sure I would have been quite so enthusiastic. At that time, we were faced with what was called a financial cliff. Finances had hit rock bottom. Our jobs money from the federal government had dried up. Funding from the state just simply wasn't there that we needed to continue to offer and maintain the level of education we were looking to do so. At that time, when we use the figure, we're talking about a, Board of Education had 50, over a $50 million budget. At the end of my first year, we had $275,000 total in our fund balance. Total. And it takes over $800,000 just to run our system in one month. So, we settled down. We had to make some hard decisions through attrition, looking at positions, making cuts in certain things we had funded, and we came through it. And I think we came through it very, very well. And we managed to maintain our financial stability the entire time I had been on the board. The other thing that we, as I've gone through, one of the things we don't know about, of course, is COVID, for heaven's sakes. We survived, but it was a total shock. I still remember talking to our superintendent, Dr. Baldwin. We were talking about it, and I think the next day, he called me and said, Jim, we're done. We have shut down. So, we had to come together and figure out a way to offer virtual learning to all of our students, and we weren't ready for that. I don't think any school system was ready for that, but we succeeded. We did everything we could through the offering of hotspots, funding, making our schools available to people, and we managed to get through. I hope we never go through that again, folks, because it was not the best education. Virtual learning, unfortunately, in my opinion, does not prepare students and is not a substitute for in-classroom teaching. Our teachers are an important part of that. Students need to be in front of them. They need to listen and interact with the students. And they also need to interact with each other. It's one of the most important parts of being a part of public education. The other thing I'm very adamant about, and one reason I'm running again, is that we currently have some projects that I feel like are very, very important to our future. Making some tracks, I don't think, but the biggie, our New Franklin High School. Did you see the efforts? We've seen the efforts of Board of Education, working with our legislatures, Senator Corbin and Representative Carl Gillespie, that we worked with them, found how to do it, and we were able to obtain, to our efforts, $62 million to have paid this new high school. I'm very proud of that, and I'm looking forward to it. My grandchildren will be able to go there at some point. So, time, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate you showing interest.
What category is this? Math, again? Between 1 and 100, how many multiples of 7 are odd numbers?
Let's start counting. How about 7?
Correct.
True or false, the human shoulder is a ball and sock joint?
True.
Yep.
What is the prefix in the word unnecessary?
Oh, that might be un. Very tough question.
Geography.
What is the capital of Oregon?
Oregon?
Yeah.
No, say it.
You do. But he answered.
All right, we're going to go with the Board of Education. How can the Board of Education accomplish its goals?
What a decision begins with the five members that are elected by our community. They have to have a cohesive relationship that is very, very essential. And I'm very proud of the current board we have. They leave their, they have any personal agendas they're left at the door, and that's a wonderful feeling. So, basically, you have to have five individuals who are committed to working for the betterment of our educational system. They're upfront, and they listen to each other. There may be times we agree to disagree, but at least when we walk out, we feel like we've made the best choice we possibly can, and the future of our schools is being taken care of.
How can our county retain quality teachers?
That's perhaps, that's either the first or second most important question. It's not going to be with money anytime soon. So, it's going to have to be work environment. It's going to have to be support. One of the things that pops up in the teacher working survey where Macon County Schools is below the rest of the state is input on the budget. So, one of the things, and it's a small thing, but I think it matters, is greater teacher input on the budget. Having to say, and what programs are adopted. I think the more that teachers are seen, the more they believe that they have a voice in what goes on in their building, what programs are adopted, then I think that that goes a long way towards teacher retention. It's the best you can do with limited funds, I think.
According to the U.S. Constitution, the president is part of which of the three branches of government?
He is part of the executive branch.
That's it. How many countries are in Africa?
I have no idea.
Language arts? Can you hear me? Retired teacher. How many nouns are in this sentence? "The rabbit ran to the cafeteria and ate a big California salad."
I think that would be 3.
3 is correct. Which one of these is a mammal, a seahorse, a sea lion, or a sea urchin?
That would be a sea lion.
How will you handle requests if approached by a member of the community or special interest groups?
I've kind of answered that. I heard you were listening to people. I think it's very important that you follow the process that's been established. If you're approached by a special interest group, you ask questions, you make no promises. As you said, you know what I said. Never say, "I'll fix it," or "I'll take care of it." So, you inquire, get as much information as you can, then you refer it bluntly to the superintendent and to the rest of Board of Education. One of five votes, guys, that's what it is. You only have one vote. I learned very early, that doesn't count, I mean, it counts, but you've got to have the other five along with you. So, to do that, take it to board, to superintendent, and you make the best decision you possibly can, as long as it does not be in conflict with our mission of Macon County School.
How would you support a board decision that you are not in favor of?
I think what you do is you listen to their reasons as to why they, you know, they presented it, and then you put on a brave face and you support that decision. And you give it some time, you know. I certainly do not have a monopoly on truth or policy, and there's an excellent chance that my position, my perspective, my vision is wrong. So, I think what you do is you, as Jim said a minute ago, when you come out of the vote, when you come out of the meeting, it's a unified front. And then, you wait for time. You give You give it six months a year and then if the decision is going sideways, then maybe say, okay, fellow board members, do we need to revisit this? So you let, you let time, give things some time and let evidence prove that, you know, you were wrong or maybe you need to revisit it.
This is going to be the final question for each and we're gonna do a team answer, so. Whips plane in our solar system is known for its beautiful rings.
Saturn. I agree.
What are the large rocks that orbit the sun between Mars and Jupiter?
Asteroids.
All right, we're going to give the candidates three more minutes each and then we're gonna wrap it up. This is your closing statement. It is, it is a little bit past 7:30, so we don't want to keep people, tomorrow, school starts tomorrow, so they have a job to do.
At this point, we're having a closing statement, which we'll make do. As I've expressed, there's issues confronting our school system. It's important to have the right people in the Board of Education. You're constantly judging what is best for our children, you know, what is best for our county. All right, a little bit closer there. So keep it a short line, as I said. I think my experience is very valuable. I've been through it. I've seen a lot of different scenarios as I've gone through life and to work with the board. But I would confess, one of the things that I'm probably most proud of is that every board that I've worked with, we have always been together. We haven't had personal agendas interfere with things. Especially, and I want to especially comment on the current board, we have four members, four of the members by myself, who are totally and utterly committed to the students of Macon County and doing the things that we really think are in their best interest. So we're going into an uncertain future. We have a lot of big projects that we're being faced with. I'd like to be part of that, lovely. And I think with my experience, I will do everything I possibly can, both for the community and for our school systems. And above all else, is whatever is in the best interest of the student. That is the golden rule. Thank you.
Thank you, John Betsy Matt and the Macon Young Progressives for putting the event together. Thank you, Bobby, for live streaming it. Thank you to everybody who came tonight to listen to us. Again, I start my 30th year tomorrow and I agree with Jim that experience counts. I think Jim has done a fantastic job serving in what is often a thankless job for 16 years. I made the decision to run because I believed it is time for a teacher voice on the Board of Education. Teachers are the frontline workers in the process and teachers have a unique and important perspective in vetting programs, in vetting decisions, in vetting policy. And I think it's time for somebody who has spent 30 years in the classroom and 30 years outside the classroom advocating at the state and local level to have a position on the board. I take you back to my advocacy page. I sued the state of North Carolina in one. The reason that veteran teachers have career status in this state is because myself and four of the people joined together and we sued the state. The reason that Jim's Board of Education and no other Board of Education had to deal with the cuts to arts and music and P.E. and K3 is because several of us got together outside of Jim Street in the freezing cold several years ago and we lobbied those General Assembly members of both houses hard. Those are some of the victories that I've achieved. I've also lost several times. I've worked when the board was faced with a massive shortfall. You go onto the website, look, all the cuts that we were going to face. I got together with current board member Stephanie Lassiter, Molly Meyer Phillips, Jennifer Love, and Kate McLean and we put together a multi-part, multifaceted group. We lobbied the county commission hard and we got an extra 1.4, 1.5 million dollars in the current operating expense. So I agree that experience counts and I also believe that action matters and I encourage you to give me a hard look. Go to the website, johndavid.com and I would deeply appreciate your vote. November 5th, early vote that starts October 17th. Thank you all again very much.
All right, thank you candidates, thank you teachers. I think, thank you everyone for coming out. The winner is the teachers. All right, again, thank you guys for coming out. Again, we have Bucket back there for donations for Together We Can, which is a foster, they take care of foster families here in town. The Macon County Young Progressive Voters have another event coming up. It's September 14th. It's going to be at Westlake Park and it's going to be a animal adoption slash voter registration event. It's through Appalachian Animal Rescue here in town. So it's going to be from 10 to 2, I think. So show up if you can. Yeah, thank you guys for coming out.